Seven o'clock, let's call this meeting to order. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, for anyone that hasn't been here before, the emergency exits are over here in the back corner and then the door you came in. Uh, please silence all your phones, gizmos, smartwatches, all that good stuff. I appreciate that. There is a sign in sheet. We'd like to sign in to first know if students here. And this, um, meeting will be held in accordance with the rules and procedures adopted by us for January twentieth of twenty twenty-one. Um. Makes sense all of the preliminary stuff, so we have a, uh, we have minutes from the last meeting. Anyone have any? Issues with them? I have a motion to approve. Motion by staff, motion by staff, second by Aaron. Any other comments? All in favor? See if I'm saying aye. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay, minutes are passed. Okay. Um, I don't believe there were any additional legal notices, uh, published, so we start with the PB zero eight zero one dash twenty-one preliminary subdivision. For the front and the common area and the, uh, post, um, credit.
So, uh, is that asking me to do it?
Yeah. Sorry. I do have a board, but I figured the screening would be easier for everyone to see. All right, I just. Great. Good evening, everyone. Matt Thomas, a marathon engineer, joined by Jim Sodopolous, who's the owner of Plaza. Uh, we have been before this board a couple of times before, and I believe, uh, that the board also received a letter from us acknowledging that we don't anticipate any type of approval today, requesting continuation until the November meeting. We are working on revised plans addressing Tom Engineer and Seth's comments, but as part of the PRC meeting, which Jared Goldman, who's part of the design team, could be here tonight, uh, attended this past Friday, there were several questions or comments raised, um, that had a significant impact to our minds to the hopeful preliminary approval that we want to obtain on November third, so wanted to take the opportunity to appear before you again tonight, talk through some of those things, hopefully give you folks an understanding of what we're proposing, as well as get a better feel from the board's perspective on the items that, uh, would like to be addressed or completed within that preliminary application. Since we appeared before this board previous, we had made application to the zoning board of appeals for a side setback variance. Uh, that's one of the items that, uh, we requested, uh, feedback from this board. Last time we were here, we had proposed, and what's shown on this version of the rendering, a front setback variance, as well as a side setback variance. The zoning board had previously approved the two ADA variance for no direct access out to the street. So we revised the plan and had submitted, uh, a plan to the zoning board with the credit union, uh, slid back away from the road in order to comply with a hundred foot setback required by the MTOD overlay and still reflecting the requested side setback. The zoning board of fields did grant that side setback variance, and again, that's part of the reason why we put ventilate coming back to this board, because that had an effect on the layout and the subdivision dimensions if that was not successful. So that brings us to today, and, uh, what I wanted to show you folks is the updated rendering. The building slid back to the hundred feet, still representing the side setback that we did obtain the variance from. There were a couple of conditions, including fencing and compliance with ATM safety act lighting, uh, as part of that from the zoning board, so you'll see that reflected in the revised package. Uh, I'm gonna touch on a couple of the questions that I know are outstanding, uh, from the planning board chair relative to some of the circulation and some curve work on the front side, touch briefly on the main, uh, street overlay district, uh, items that we believe need to be addressed, and then I wanna turn it over to the board for some of the dialogue of some other items that either I'm not aware of or that the board, uh, would like to raise, so.
Give me just a second to explain to everybody what I did. I, you probably saw my comments. I sent in an initial set of comments, which basically concerned more of the rear access and the roadway and those types of things, and then I sent a follow-up email that highlighted some of the streetscape and MTOD requirements, knowing that the applicant was going to look at the streetscape and MTOD guidelines and comply with them completely, but I just wanted to highlight some of the things that certainly I would be looking at, so, um, and my this, or my comments on the rear of the building had to do a lot with housekeeping and some other things, but also that it was my understanding that there was a cross-assessment across the back parking lot two ninety-six. So that's kind of where we started. I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same sheet of music, and that generated some of my comments and some of them, you know, um, might be overkill, but at least I wanted to get them on the record.
Yeah.
And to help you out, because I wanted you to come back to be able to, instead of coming in and then having to hit to the questions and then go back and go back and forth, it doesn't make any sense to me, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what we're prepared to discuss today, so I, I, I'm gonna start with the main street overlay district. Um, there is sidewalk, uh, and we talked about this with the board when we first came in along Route ninety-six. There's landscaping, there's benches, and, uh, you know, small pocket cars at the intersection that's been installed previously. It's our understanding that while there may be a couple of trash, trash receptacles and door benches, uh, required along Route ninety-six in addition to what's already, uh, presented or provided at the corner, that the main improvement, if you will, missing in order to upgrade the frontage along ninety-six is lighting along that sidewalk area, and that is something that we understand wants to be, um, uh, provided as part of first phase here with the credit union, and it's our understanding that we'll stay within the guidelines, work with the town engineer. Um, we're not proposing to remove any of the pavements for the drive aisles around, so some of the, uh, buffering or other requirements will work with the town on how to accomplish that, but essentially, I believe that's grandfathered in, given, you know, the placement of the plaza, which is not where it would be if we were coming in within the build right now. Uh, that being said, uh, from a circulation standpoint, and that's really where I want to spend much of the time, we know and have discussed with this board previously that, uh, you know, the remaining development of this parcel is, uh, a TBD and a concept plan was submitted, both layout and utility-wise, to demonstrate potential viability to it. We recognize that what's shown here, if it was to be developed exactly this way, would require variances, approvals through this board, the same process that we're going through with the credit. The big hang up on that or the, uh, issue that everyone knows is available is traffic, right? So we've submitted a traffic study, we've gotten feedback from state DOT. Basically, if we build a shed that has one car that holds up to it, we have to do some mitigation, and a lot of that is going to be tied in conjunction with items that we do not have control over, which includes development off of our property. And the developer is committed to working with the town, working with the adjacent owner for that future development, but because we can't forecast that future, uh, that's what, where we are today. And so from a circulation and what is present out on the site today, Aldi was originally, this piece of land was originally owned, uh, by Jim and his family as well, and when, and now it's been sold off to a separate owner, but as part of that easements were put in place for cross-access throughout the existing driveways on the site, so some of the comments really related to, uh, cutting off, uh, because this is no longer intended to be the main access point for a common drive or roadway, and that is now going to be handled by the extension of Mercier Road out to ninety-six further to the west, uh, that driveway configuration really does not work anymore for what's happening now. And that was a comment that was raised by the state DOT reinforced by feedback from Tom's staff. So as part of phase one, it's been requested that we close off, and I'm going to zoom in just a little bit here if I can. Close off, right now the configuration, uh, considered a roadway, which was started here that would split or or straddle the property line all the way through, that's no longer being contemplated. And there was a driveway cut here and a driveway cut here. The one at the rear facilitates the larger trucks, the deliveries, uh, that kind of traffic that proceeds, you can see, uh, there's a truck likely making the delivery right now, and, uh, this was more intended for the, uh, passenger vehicles and allowing access, uh, into the plaza. As we all know, ninety-six is a, a busy intersection, that intersection's been there for a while. Right now, uh, it's not, or it was not originally designed for two exiting lanes with left turn and right turn, and during busy times, there's backup from light, there is holdup if somebody's trying to take a left there, et cetera. And part of, uh, that is also exacerbated by somebody pulls in and is trying to take a left there, uh, when there's queuing or backup, there's very limited queuing in that driveway, so one of the requests was to close that off and to allow for, uh, roughly three to four more vehicles worth of stacking and queuing to exit at that driveway, which I think makes an awful lot of sense. Some of the questions that we'll raise as well, where is the cross-access easement presence on this parcel? And so, just so the board knows, there is an easement which is intended to follow, slightly off the pavement here, but essentially rings the entirety of the plaza and all of the other drive aisles throughout, and also was extended in anticipation of future connection to, uh, that roadway on the west side of the parcel. Um, I believe that it's going to be the most straightforward for Jim and for his, uh, dealing with his tenants and everyone else in the future, to remove those easements and just provide a blanket cross-access easement that covers the entirety of all the property, so that if drive aisles move, depending on what happens with the future development, that kind of thing, that question kind of goes away, because wherever the drive aisles are, people that are tenants or, uh, or clients are going to have the right to drive over them. But we'll work through that detail in the future. So the intention of closing this is not to force or change traffic patterns. Right now, if somebody wants to drive through the rear of this in order to access Burger King or Aldi coming in from here, that's a straight shot and will essentially remain a straight shot coming through that and through there. We do need to provide a backup house to this plaza. Jim has many tenants in that plaza, it's been very successful, and it is a busy plaza at times, uh, especially uh, during busier times for, for coffee roasters in the morning, other tenants that he's got in there. So, uh, from a traffic circulation standpoint, what this is going to do is clean up that we're intending to provide a directional sign that directs plaza tenants, uh, here, deliveries to the rear. Uh, we also anticipate providing stop control, which would not allow folks to whip through here, put a stop bar and stop signage, uh, in order to accommodate that, this intersection will also stop, entering vehicles will be allowed to free flow, uh, in. So I know that there's also been some question about traffic coming, could speed bumps be put in, could, but we believe that we can do that with some crosswalk striping, some stop bars, some stop signs, and, um, you know, ultimately, this is a self-police area, however, but Jim can deal with that with his tenants uh, on an as-needed basis, and continue to think about those things as we develop the rest of the lot. Right now, there's limited driveway cuts, limited vehicles turning onto these stretches, and so it does allow people to get up to speed without having to worry about somebody coming through an intersection. That hopefully is going to change as we continue to develop this property. So, uh, I know there were some other questions or comments about providing some crosswalk stripping. I understand that there was some question about some, uh, trash receptacles possibly along the rear of the plaza. Jim, uh, is aware of that, going to talk about moving them into the enclosures as part of the future development of this. Uh, we do anticipate having to take a hard look at the loading for that to make sure that it works for the tenants if and when some of these other changes proceed. We also anticipate that that would result in a relocation of these, uh, trash enclosures as well. So we'll work through all that portion in the interim. Phase one, we do understand the concern up here, curving, striping, directional signage. We are committed to putting that in as part of phase one, and think that that will alleviate a lot of the questions or comment that you had about, uh, what's happening with the plaza itself, okay? If there are code violations, things with trash that the town's seeing, please let Jim know, he'll talk to his tenant, he'll take care of it. We can handle that, I think, kind of outside of the site plan comments if needed, but we can, we can talk about that. So I think with that relative to, you know, some items about snow storage, um, again, crosswalks, we want to understand where you're looking for those. We can see if we can accommodate that in the grand scheme of things here, but I hopefully have addressed some of the questions and I can answer anything else.
I think you did. I mean, to me, there's issues with driving along the back, especially when you're loading on one side. We just need to have some kind of a delivery concept of how you're gonna deliver, so that you're not gonna bring a tractor trailer in there and block the whole back easement. Uh, certainly, they can then come through the front. Nobody really wants to drive through the front all the way through with all the backing. Trust me, I've done it a million times and I. So, you know, we just need to do that. I think the trash receptacle thing needs to be looked at. You probably need another enclosure down farther at the other end. Uh, that one that's sitting here and just enclose it, clean up those things a little bit too, as we're looking at things, make sure that your tenants aren't storing a bunch of stuff on the back. We know there'll be some stuff, and we know there'll be deliveries, but we can't have a bunch of trash and trash cans and stuff like that along the back, if we're gonna have more traffic in the back, which we are. So, uh, I just think, uh, those were general comments to try to get everybody thinking about the bigger picture here, because a lot of times when applicants come in and forget that this is our opportunity to bring everything up to code and up to our standards with a lot of things, because this has been there forever, you know, and we understand that. So, uh, I think it's important that, you know, my comment about having a cross, uh, you know, marking to get to the trash, that's probably overkill, but my thought that pattern there was pretty simple, when you got people zipping down through there, you do that, then maybe they'll think a little bit, and somebody bringing trash down, well, it hit. That was my thought pattern on that, it was just more of a safety thing. I think you're gonna need, you're gonna need a crosswalk coming across into the plaza on the west side here, um, and striped so that people can come on a on a far west closer to the entrance, you know, down in there, so that from ninety-six and, you know, that, that way you get, just get some, uh, because people aren't gonna walk all the way down to the center to come in on there. They're gonna walk across the grass or whatever. And, uh, the curving that I was really most concerned about is roadway. The, it's right there, right that roadway right in there. Because if you go in there today, and I just was there today, people have driven off into the mud puddles and there's. It's narrow to start with, but it's, without the curves, there, people are going into the mud puddles and they're, they're running up the sides of the road. Uh, people are gonna fall in there and, you know, have a mess, so. I think you've got the curving a little ways. You just need to conclude, continue it all the way to Aldi's, uh, or the Aldi's piece and then make sure on the inside.
So we'd like to talk about the curving a little bit, so we are proposing it on the interior side, and that's the similar to the Burger King look and everything else.
Yeah.
Along the east side of that drive, that road is designed without drainage and it sheath loads into the roadside as well as in the lawn area, so when we start talking about adding curving, which I think would be an issue here, you've got to dig up the road, put in storm. There isn't really a place to take it because it all goes across the road right now. Um, our intention would be to leave that uncurved, it's easier for snow plowing, it is narrow, it would have to be widened if you put curb in there, it's not straight. And so, uh, it's very similar to.
And you know, people are running off into mud puddle, paving open, paving wider.
Well, that's one of the things that we'll look at, either gravel or a paved shoulder on there in order to clean that up. Um, so I, I'll work with Jim on that. I mean, his, we want to make the front of this a little bit, right? And I know there's been comment about some of the pavement conditions, that we're gonna be in there paving, we'll be striping. I, I don't think that those things are any type of issue that we'll have a problem addressing as we move this forward.
Yeah, I would, even if you did cuss in here to let the water go through or something, I just think curving makes more sense than the one. I would bring up with Chair a couple of things, that the, the trash receptacles, I think we're on our fourth set of gates, or that, that shared now. Um, we've had, we've had discussion with tenants, we, we hounded them to try and keep things out of the back of the plaza, back of the plaza. Because originally, when we were here thirty years ago, it was intended to sort of be like a four-sided front, this building, but it wasn't a front per se. So, and, and we've had other issues where people who have come in here, they see it's convenient, they come to bed at night, so now we've got cameras, they come in here from couches, other garbage inside there, and they destroy it, so we, we've been trying to figure out a solution for that, and we'll, we'll work with Tom's staff to do that. Um, you also mentioned the traffic calming, like the speed bumps. We had those in there probably ten or fifteen years ago.
Yeah, all the time, right?
Yeah, and they would do the patch around or a rever, or a snowplowing, we'd get in there and they would destroy that, the snowplowing, so it was it was shouting, and we could certainly look at, try and figure that out again.
Yeah, I don't know an answer to that, to be honest with you.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you don't put curving there, then you gotta come up with another solution, so people aren't riding off into the, into the grass and mud and, and making a hell of a mess out of it. It's a mess right now. I don't know how deep those puddles are, but I can see the rust in there, that they're probably six, eight inches deep. People run off the edge of the road on there in a little car, and it's not gonna be a good thing. So, uh, I just think you need to come up with something there. As for the front of the plaza and putting curving in there, probably don't need that. I will tell you though, I was there today and I saw a guy backing a truck up, back out of the grass, and he pulled forward, so they're gonna tear it up eventually, but it's just more of a, you know, to protect you, uh, your, your property or stuff. Uh, and again, my comments were more, we're gonna be looking at it pretty strong and hard, especially in the back, um, and, uh, work with staff and certainly work with me. Okay, well, turn over to staff, Ron.
Yeah, well, since the opportunity is here, I think there's a couple of things. Let's, let's. I always thought, oh, Jim is allergic, now I know. Um, the zoning board of appeals put some conditions on the variances that were granted. And one of them, they want some court testing of that existing roadway to see what it's comprised of, because it was put in a number of years ago, it's, it's Jim said here tonight, thirty years ago.
Right.
Um, it may not withstand today's standards, uh, especially for some of our heavy fire apparatus that has to access that area. Um, so that's something that we're gonna be looking for, as to what the results of that are, and how that affects the, the drainage patterns that you have. There shouldn't be, when you have this site developed, uh, any runoff from the site across that driveway, uh, you know, because of the MSOD program. So, yeah, I want you to keep that in mind when you, when you start thinking about not putting in curving. The other point that I want to just stress here is that the concept plan for the buildout of the site, which I know it's not something that you're necessarily looking at, but if it's not addressed now, when it does become an issue, somebody will say, well, why didn't you bring it up? Okay, and that is, I would never, ever want to see this driveway road go in front of that plaza. Okay, it has to go around in back of that plaza. The parking configurations that you have there in front of the plaza right now are dangerous enough that we don't need large trucks, trailer trucks, or other vehicles going through that area, people trying to get through that area to get to, to exit Route ninety-six. So I will, if I'm still here, fight very strongly against that design that you have on that concept plan, and Jim, you can take that to the bank, or whoever you want to take it to.
Can you clarify that, Mr. Brown? I guess I'm not understanding what you're talking about exactly. It's just sound clear in my head, that's all. I agree with the same, I want to.
You know how the existing alignment is, where it curves up, you have people slowing down and making the turn into right turn?
Yeah, okay.
Your concept plan shows it going straight across there. That's not gonna happen there.
Fine, okay.
Okay. The, the other thing that I would ask the planning board to think about is, yes, we do have MSOD regulations. Those do call for benches, they do call for trash receptacles and things of this nature. This site is somewhat unique. Okay. We have had, uh, the Chamber of Commerce go in there, John Madasso, and, and has done, with Jim's blessing, extensive improvements, creating a very attractive pocket park. Um, I'd like you to take that into consideration when you think about how useful additional benches or things of this nature along ninety-six might be. My final comments, uh, address the issue that Pat has brought up, and that is the two access points to the driveway that goes out to Route ninety-six on the west end of the property. They don't meet the MSOD standards. The one in the rear does, the one up front doesn't. And the other thing that I would like to ask is that perhaps if that area is closed off, then it might be more conducive to a sidewalk, so that people walking along the sidewalk could go directly towards the plaza in that area without, uh, having vehicles interfere with that movement. So that's, that's my, my sum and substance tonight, uh, I think that, you know, this is a very, very, um, it's a a polar cornerstone.
Yeah.
And Ontario County is always harping on us to maintain this gateway. Uh, it's a very valuable piece of property. I think it's got a tremendous potential. And, and I think that over the years, a lot of things have been done by others for this site, such as the state DOT putting in sidewalks, putting in street trees, such as the Chamber of Commerce putting in park, and, and those amenities. Um, now it's Jim's turn to come to, to the table and, and become part of it, you know?
Cool. Okay, Dan.
Um, all right, I have a few things. I want to go through and work. I agree with Chairman on this curving on that road. I've gone down it of late, and we, we gotta do something, um, especially even if there was some cubs in the curves that allowed the drainage to come out, so you could still flow the water out. Um, the other one is the trash receptacles out back. That, that's almost a property maintenance, uh, code issue back there, especially the one that, uh, I know that the main one looks like it's brick all the way around, but the other one has like a fence that's not in great shape, so that, that was a concern of mine. Uh, traffic flow, again, I think we've all harped on that. I do like that the entrance is going to be modified in this first phase. Um, I think that's important, but I think with pushing people back to that back corner, you're gonna have more people going behind. I, I do like the ideas of the stop signs for traffic calming devices. Um, that plaza is very busy. Uh, we've been out there a few times, or even people going into the plaza, as Jim's well aware of. I mean, I, I don't know, there's a lot of traffic there. Uh, from a code point of view though, with the plaza, I think that we're pretty much squared away. Uh, Jim has been out there with the fire marshal, and he knows some fire marshal stuff that has been resolved, and Steve was graciously enough and got right on it for us, and that has been taken care of, so. Um, with that said, I don't have a lot more to offer from a code point of view. Um, I agree with Bron's comments about the MSOD, uh, right? And, and the comments that, uh, that you've set out, which I'm sure you're. Um, I would like to comment for MRV, who's not able to be here, our town engineer. Uh, they stated that MRV issued a comment, but it dated August fourth, but it's not been. It's not been, uh, yeah, been responded to with revision plans, and then they don't have any additional comments on that.
Okay. Cool. Highway.
Okay, I've got a couple of points to make, uh, and, and again, I'm gonna beat a dead horse with that curbing around the front side of over there, uh, around that Burger King area on that east shoulder. Uh, who for thought on that curving would be a timable curving of sorts, whereas a cutting and curving and, and go so far as to, uh, consider a green infrastructure of some sort where the cuts, where the curb cuts drain down into it with, uh, where you're actually putting the water, uh, water, or in plants and stuff of that nature, uh, which would add to the landscaping along there, I'm sure that would give you some interesting points with the, the board on, on some of the landscaping there. Uh, moving from that, uh, part of my concern, and I must go a little bit more on the choose under here, uh, with closing that one entrance, though I agree with that for the stacking, uh, it, it arises a concern with fire apparatus getting up and making this sweep across the front side of this building. Uh, if per se, uh, there was a fire of some sort, uh, fire apparatus would be needed to get around the front as well as, as the back of the structure.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be an issue, Chief. Uh, go out and down, but the issue is that, um, most of your stores are coming out front towards ninety-six, so that would be place where we're gonna be putting apparatus plus the hivers position. Um, and then the other issue is when you have people evacuating out there, bus train come in, or if we have two points come in, and you give it just crash bar, maybe someone will go across there, they can't, well, we can pop the bar and come in, come through that way.
Would you spend, would you park the trucks along ninety-six more than get into the parking lot anyway, because of traffic cars and everything else?
Uh, in the calls we've had there in the past, where we've had, uh, vehicles going, coffee roasters and stuff, we've basically, um, here we take a center in the parking lot, or if there's open spots along the edge, we'll run there. But I mean, then we're, we have trucks, we gotta log in, so, and, and the later it closes, it's not warm.
You can get in, the trucks can get in the other way around. You can get in both ways with the, with the ladder truck.
Ladder truck, eighteen yard. Ladder truck, go back there. Problem is going to be, if you close off that, then we'll have to go all the way around the back and around. Move around, come around to the front.
All right, something to get thoughts to, Dan?
Um, I'm gonna ask the applicant to provide us a turning radius for, for that. So, so that we can, so that you guys can already do that, sure.
Yeah.
And we may be able to incorporate a non-able curve across there with the sidewalk that we'll talk, we'll take a look at that intersection for pedestrian or movements and come back with something for you.
Okay. All right. Um. Board, again, this is just more general comments as the builder come, not coming back till the November meeting, but I wanna give some good discharge of comments, not criticism per se, but comments, so that they understood where we're coming from and not hit you a month later with, oh wow, why didn't you tell us through? Tim?
Yeah, my, my question will be around that new configuration on the west entrance. I understand, you know, queuing more vehicles, but as Dan said, you know, what's that turning radius? You know, if you've got a car waiting to exit by turning right towards ninety-six, and a car coming in that rounds in, into the plaza, uh, it looks pretty tight, you know, that section that you summed in on? Yeah, I mean, I just don't, I don't understand how much room there would be for a car or a, you know, a truck, a pickup truck, a box truck, anything, to get around that corner to get to the front of the plaza. So that's, that's a concern I have and, you know, I agree with all the other comments that you made as well.
Hey, Doug?
I mean, a lot of them, Mike, they still have from, from what we're discussing as everyone was before us, I don't know that I have a lot more to add at this point. Look, personal operate, so.
Hey, Adrian?
I'm good with all the comments that I've brought up today. Would add some of the new ideas right now that are being shown tonight. Um, I would agree with Ron, though, that if there's a second build out of that little parcel or whatever, to have everything going through the front of that plaza, that would not be good. It's very dangerous backing up just a little bit. I couldn't imagine if you had to walk across there and somebody's going through there to cut through to get to the bank or whatever. Um, and that road's narrow down there by Burger King and stuff and what that's had in the mud and stuff, which I already brought up, it's narrow. So something may, will have to be addressed somehow in a decent manner with that, you know? But, so maybe the bigger picture of the, is this the way we did it? Projected for the future build out, right now, to, to us, maybe, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Uh, is that back driveway the same width as the front? We, me, meaning if two, the carpet park on both sides of that back lot can, is there wide enough for vehicles to go past each other on that?
Yeah, there, there's at least twenty-four, I think it's twenty-five feet for both driveways.
That's, this, this from being back there, there's so much. There, there, there seems to be a lot, a lot of pedestrian people going, going to the trash.
Yeah.
Uh, loading and unloading. It concerns me that next, I've seen, I've seen kids, people just speeding through there a little bit faster than they should, especially to avoid that front park. I would like to see right in the middle of that plaza somewhere, I know you haven't said you have to stop, I would like to see a speed bump or, or something that has, that really slowed them down in that straightaway. Um, yeah, I mean, even if, like you said, before you had it, and they would just go around it. Even if they go around it, they're still slowing down.
Yeah, and I think, and Doug, isn't, aren't there some newer types of speed bumps that can actually be plowed over?
But they have a.
Yeah, there's some different, I mean, I remember the old one and that, you're right, that was, but I've seen some that come up and then level a little bit, then come down and that tends to slow people down a little bit too.
They're real similar to, uh, a raised, uh, crosswalk.
Yeah.
Right.
So just a thought, so, any other?
Yeah, what, another, another thing, so that, that entrance coming up in ninety-six, you know, we're trying to make the, the cityscape. That sidewalk is just so close to, so close to ninety-six and there's, it's gonna be traffic there. I just don't know, is, is there a way to push pedestrian traffic further, further south from ninety-six? Do you move a crosswalk back?
And sidewalks are already there, I want you to rip out all the existing sidewalks and bring them back out.
Is there?
And you got trees there, too.
So is there a way to make a, make a crosswalk and kind, kind of push it back?
I think you got utilities that you'd like to do also.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Okay.
I know that there's a utility line that comes right from basically, that would be the northwest corner of the plaza. It comes back over to ninety-six, there's a, I know there's fiber out there, either fiber or phone cable.
Oh, really?
Cable and all kinds of stuff, there's a big trunk and pipe that goes through there, to utilities.
Right. Yeah, I don't see how that can be moved, as much as we'd like it, but I.
Yeah, the question is to move pedestrians that are going to the plaza, into the plaza and off of that front. That's what we're gonna take a look at here, if it's for people just walking along ninety-six. But the key to that intersection, I don't know that there's a solution for pulling that back further.
Yeah.
If I may.
Yeah, that second was the question. Ron, gotta respond.
That's even more reason there to want to be, benches, that makes you.
Right.
Along that area.
Well, yeah, I mean, be in there until Mercer Boulevard is there.
Yeah.
But again, I think you want, uh, streetlights.
Yeah, streetlights, we get the streetlights in there, um, that would be nice.
That's, that's all I have.
Okay, and again, please take my comments as just some of the things we'll be looking at, especially when it comes to street paving. If you pull up those racks, look at them, see what's going on, make sure you meet them. And if you've got any questions, talk to staff, certainly Ron is the expert on all of that, as is Dan, and so we'll make sure we, it, what we'd rather have you do is come in with many things addressed ahead of time, so we can go through it quicker and get you out of there quick, that's what we're, we wanna do for you, so. Um, I would look, and if, since the GBA put in a requirement to do some core drilling to check the size of composite of that roadway, I would do that quickly. So, because I'm forbidden, you gotta replace that roadway, that's gonna be the last whole defense, I would think.
Yeah, I got a copy of the resolution, I don't, there was a condition for fencing and something about lighting, but there wasn't anything about the driveway, so.
Yeah, there was, when you look at the area variance for the two eighty-eight.
Okay. I have a side setback during the resolution, so I have to pull that off. It's a lot of paperwork from town. We, we only generate what we, what we're gonna. I understand. So we'll take a little bit.
On the, um, bank or the credit union itself, um, the big thing I'm concerned about right now, just to give you a heads up, is lighting. Cause I'm concerned that bank lighting is gonna cause trouble for the.
Cause trouble in what, in what way?
The spillage on the adjacent properties, I don't, you know what I mean, I just wanna, I'm worried that there's gonna be a lot of lighting for that bank.
Well, there, there will be.
Yeah, but like, there's only part of the field's recommend step, and they put a condition in there that it would be either a four foot high solid wood fence or planting along that border between Burger King and the, so as to address the headlight issues of vehicles on both sides.
We'll just make sure we have decent reminders to understand that or something, ways to see it better, you know, we're gonna have a fence there, I guess, so, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we are gonna provide a fence, but that's, it's gonna be below eye level and the lights will be taller than that. So, from a light spill standpoint, just like Aldi does now, just like Burger King does now with their lighting, their spill across those interior property lenses and spill to the exterior to the right of way, but, I mean, that's a very standard for a plaza like this, with shared access drives, everything, and moving pedestrians through everything else. So, I, I guess I'm not understanding the concern that there's no impact to the right of way through here.
Well, I don't know yet until it's, I just feel like, I, most banks have a ton of lighting, so I didn't.
Well, there's a lighting plan in the package that we submitted in landscaping already, for, for the, specific to the, to the bank.
But it's, I guess, what I, I think we're, it's spilling over, I guess it's part of code, we don't allow light spill between properties and, well, you know, again, I know it's just, realize it might happen, but I mean, I guess we need to look at that and see how you.
I think for interior property lines, just like there are interior property lines out here right now, and like we did across the street at Taco Bell KFC, I mean, there's common lighting, common area lighting for roadways, for parking, for everything that crosses all the property lines. I mean, that's very standard for a plaza like this, and I don't know if there's exceptions for interior property lines, definitely we have good areas for the side, except for interior property line, but, uh, I think spill is running interior property line to a common plaza, it's handled very differently than if you were spilling to a residence on the side of Aldi, for example.
Yeah, and I think it's one of those things, you gotta look at codes and see how that works. Yeah, I haven't looked at that in a little while.
And a lot of times you don't carve out and make separate lots either, I mean, usually it's one parcel.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to keep bringing up the property across the street, but again, this is exactly what we did with this board. There's common lighting throughout the whole thing, just like this will be, so I think it's consistent with what, what this board has done in similar projects in the past for when, when they are carved up in separate parcels.
Okay.
And I, just so the board knows, we're planning on submitting the updated packages on fourteenth in advance of the third, that's the cutoff that we've been given. We also hope, and I think we're at least signing, so we hope to be able to tell you which financial institution it is, and, um, potentially we'll have some additional information for you relative to that as well, so.
Okay.
Thanks for your.
Good luck, and hopefully it helps some, I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't put those in, it just upset anybody. I wanted to know if there were some issues. Oh, that's right, we do have resolutions. What do we have, John?
A generation.
And two continuations, right?
First one is through subdivision, it's a push.
It is a public hearing, you're right. All right, I'm sorry, let's go back, Don had a question.
With, with the turning radius, if you would, uh, as I look closely at the credit union property itself, uh, with all the canopy stuff on this nature, uh, reference that back corner where fire apparatus to make that sweep. If they gotta come back around, I guess it would be to that southwest corner.
Making this move to.
This, this entrance, if I'm not mistaken, to the west is not gonna be in right away, correct?
That's correct.
So, uh, fire apparatus that had to get back to this corner would probably come in here and have to make this sweep around. So if you would on your turning radius, just reference that, that corner right there for apparatus to make that sweep.
Indibility get through past the can. Right?
That's what, those, we were talking about.
The distance on the canopy, and I don't know that that's gonna be a, a feasible access point for, for bigger fire apparatus. Uh, that's why I mentioned making this sweep around, because just turning radius, right here in that back corner.
Okay.
I, I, I guess I don't clearly understand when you say around, or you said around it or turn around here in.
Right, right, I, they don't come in the entrance way, just like they're gonna, say they're going to the gap, to the canopy, they would have to come in there and then they gotta sweep that driveway right around the back or to that side or to basically any need for player apparatus to attack on that back corner, on that southwest corner.
Okay. All right.
I know you gotta get out of there.
Check, check. We back, we back out, we put them in, we put the fire, we worry about getting them out.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think there's some allowances in the code for up to a hundred fifty foot that ended in some different things.
I'm sorry, you got it in there, I just, I just referenced it in your, uh, current radius.
Sure. You can do that.
Okay, couple things, couple housekeeping things, first, this is a public hearing, do I have anyone here or online to speak for or against this application? Anyone like to make comments on this application, either here or online, anybody online, nobody online? Okay, so now we have the continuation of the resolution for the, first one would be for the subdivision. A motion to waive the continuation, or the reading of the resolution and prove it as provided, so. Two second, Tim? Tim? Clerk, take a walk, call both, please.
DeLucia?
Hi.
DeBees?
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney?
Hi.
Aaron Lewis?
Hi.
Adrian Lewis?
Hi.
Adam.
Hi. Okay, now we have a continuation on the actual site plan. Motion to waive the reading and continue the, uh, preliminary site plan?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Aaron, second by.
Sorry.
Oh, any other comments? Clerk, take a walk, call both, please.
DeLucia?
Hi.
DeBees?
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney?
Hi.
DeBees Lewis?
Hi.
Hi, okay, you continue, um, see you at the first meeting in November. Right after I get back on vacation, so I'll be all primed up.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you guys, thanks for coming in. Okay, next, I have P B zero six zero two days nineteen, final site plan approval amendment for the Country Max building.
Do you get this done, Ron?
Yes.
I'll just set this here for the board. Maybe I won't. Maybe I'll put the MRB map down here, so. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here on behalf of Don Manning, who's here for Country Max, and I believe Joe Doris here as well. Um, we are, uh, my name is Esther Rowe, the Roman Deering, and we are here, uh, once again for, um, the amended, uh, amended approval of the amendment of the amendment of Mr. De Colis's project, which is on the Collingwood, Collingwood and Hook Road at the southwest corner. Uh, in our last meeting. Uh, in our last meeting, uh, there was a variety of comments raised by the planning board and appreciate that. Those comments were all incorporated and revised plans that you all have received. Uh, and, uh, we also had a meeting at the PRC meeting on, uh, this past Friday. Go over the project. I just want to go over highlights of what the modifications were, not to have you detail.
Okay.
The highlight there is this. Uh, when, uh, with Commissioner, uh, Director of Public Works, Dero indicated to us that the fiber optics along Collat World was only down a foot. And our original grading plan that was approved was actually creating regrading in the area of it right away. And, uh, we were going to have a nice gentle slope. Well, with it being down a foot, uh, we had to do rethinking because try and relocate that particular, um, fiber optics line would have been more than the whole project's work. So that being said, uh, we regraded the area. That area now, the hump, if you will, where the, uh, the burn is going to remain on the, the long Collat Road. And the slope, uh, we redesigned to a one or two slope and we are filling it with, uh, cobblestones, uh, if you will, along that slope because it was felt that, uh, both, uh, the Country Max folks felt that it would be very difficult to maintain. Um, and there would be more erosion issues than trying to, uh, landscape that. And they, uh, feel they've done it in other, other projects with this stone, uh, treatment. Which in fact is probably a little bit better situation and it won't exacerbate, uh, green infrastructure at all. So that's one of the major items. The second was we, um, modified the lighting so that the lighting is not as extensive as it was before because we want to respect the issues as of the joint subdivision or across the road or Hook Road or, uh, Hickory Ridge subdivision. The third was we did add as much landscaping for buffering to the Hook Road area. We'll call it in southeast corner. Our landscape architect tried to tuck in a few additional trees for landscape and the reason why we were, we were prohibited of putting more in is because there are a number of easements in there. Uh, there are a variety of sewer easements, uh, for sanitary sewers. So it really prohibited us to do any more landscaping than we possibly could. As far as the enclosure for the outdoor storage is concerned, uh, it's, they were shown on the architectural plans, which I believe we do have, uh, that it will be totally in height. It will be a continuation of the wall treatment that is proposed for the building. Uh, one other item that I'll, uh, provide to you folks is there was a lot of discussion about how we could, uh, work the sidewalks. The sidewalks have all been altered to meet what the planning board had suggested. And, uh, with the proper signage, which we are showing on the plan for crosswalks, uh, is also on the plan. Uh, that's primarily it. Uh, the bulk of the other infrastructure stays the same. Uh, the building elevations, uh, you do have in your packet. Uh, Don is here. He can explain some of the things relative if you ask questions about the building. Uh, I know my place. My place is not to deal with the building. I'm just an engineer, not an architect. So with that being said, I'll be more than happy to answer your questions. Um, in addition to that, uh, we filed with the town appropriate, uh, just to make things more quiet with seeker process, uh, for short form, even though we went through a very extensive seeker process before. Uh, because the building changed slightly and the areas changed slightly because Ron and staff, Ron and staff would be appropriate to do that.
Right. So we have, we have a resolution for, uh, seeker. Okay.
Right. So, so with that being said, I will end my, uh, my presentation and do, uh, I'll try to answer your questions. So if, uh, they related to the building, we'll turn it down. And to those, they, you guys that know more about this tonight.
Okay, Ron.
Yeah, I should, first let's just talk a lot secretly. Um, we, we did change the footprint.
Yep.
Um, we went from a seventy-two thousand square foot building to something larger. With a number of other, uh, imperious surfaces attached to it.
Right.
Uh, and therefore we felt it necessary to come back and update the environmental record. To supplement it, to identify the action that's before you. We took a hard look at whether or not we need to coordinate with other agencies. Uh, what I found was as a result of the previous coordination back in twenty fifteen, that the, uh, other involved agencies had no objection to the planning board being lead agency. And realistically, they had no substantive comments that we felt we needed to again, generate all that paperwork, send it out and, and wait thirty days for, uh, you know, then to comment. So what I've done is I've taken the full environmental assessment form, which I requested from Control and Engineering. The part one, uh, added to it the part two narrative which was sent to you. Uh, added to it part three narrative and divided a separate resolution for determination of non-significance. Since this is an almost to the action. Um, and by the way, this for anybody that's interested, the threshold for it going into a type one action is over a hundred thousand square feet.
Okay.
So we're not there. Um, and, and we basically have satisfied with your review and approval, um, the environmental portion of this project. Uh, one of the things that did come out in the environmental review and analysis is that, believe it or not, even with the additional buildings and everything, there's less imperious surface coverage of the site. It was this plan than there was with the previous one.
That's correct.
So that's positive.
Okay.
Uh, there is, um, one thing that I do want to address and that is that we did put a condition in there about signage at Hook Road for the sidewalk where within temporarily. Uh, we, we have to cover ourselves by not encouraging people to come to the end of the sidewalk and then just walk across the road. It's, it's not a crosswalk. So, uh, I talked with Don about this and, and we came up with some burr beach. Uh, I'd like you to just coordinate with him to make sure that the size of the signage, the materials and everything else is, is satisfied with. Uh, so that and there it's, it's good to go. Other than that, um, I crafted a resolution to approve with conditions. Those conditions are just
Hey.
My brainstorming and some of the media.
Good, thank you. Dan?
Uh, we've reviewed the amendments. The applicant did a great job of going over a quick review of what he submitted. We do have colored renderings of the building. So from a code point of view, I think our concerns were addressed. Um, I think that the document is left in the draft resolution that Ron covers. So from that aspect, um, please with everything. Uh, from engineering, uh, let's see, uh, their report. Uh, MRV has completed a review of the submitted revised final site plans and will provide a comic letter later this week. Uh, in the resolution, it does say that all items in that letter would have to be addressed as part of the approval. Uh, the second thing that they want to bring up though had to do with the, uh, lights. It should be noticed that the proposed building mounted light is not a full cutoff and we are suggesting that full cutoffs be provided. Uh, this will be identified in their comic letter, but this, uh, he felt the board should discuss the lighting about that. So. Ed, do you have any comments?
I have no issue with that.
Okay. Uh, and I agree with Lance's comment on this. I do believe it should be a, a full cutoff. So as long as you have time with that. Uh, I don't know if you guys want to edit.
We do, yeah, it's just, just to be sure.
Okay.
It's a partial cutoff, right?
Yes. And then his last comments was, uh, MRV, uh, has no objections to the planning board moving forward with tonight's, uh, approval.
Hey, Don?
I'm good at displaying.
Thank you.
Art, it's good to roll. Appreciate that.
Keep it. Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Uh, let's start down with Aaron.
Hi.
Adrian?
Um, I got a couple.
Oh, jeez.
I look fun. We got to speed with you.
I know where, I know. Uh, you and I have been working together a long time now.
So, um, the resolution, because some of this has to do with the resolution. Um, number eight said something about trees that were dead and need to be switched out or whatever. On there, I went by the site today in daylight. And I, I didn't see any dead trees that were there, so they may have been done. I'm not sure, but.
I drove by there.
So I'm not quite sure what.
The other day and I didn't see any either.
I mean, there's some mature trees that Frank planted before. And then some had died and it looks like he's got some younger ones, but they're probably doing okay, but.
There are.
So if you recall, it was, oh God, a year or two ago in one of the amendments, right, the board wanted more, some more landscaping. He did put trees in. Like some of them that died.
That is correct.
And that's why some were younger than the others.
That is correct.
So I mean, on that one, uh, in the expressive board can chime in, but I mean, I didn't see any dead or anything that needs to be addressed as of this minute.
Right.
We can go from that. Um, I got a couple of questions on, I guess I just want to make sure that there's no, no outside storage or anything. I didn't see any, do you agree with that? I mean, you have the outside.
Too cold.
Close storage, but there would be.
No outside storage.
Nothing in the parking lot.
No.
And then do we know how, um, the loading docks are just for loading, loading trucks and trailers or is there always going to be trailers sitting there or any of that kind of stuff like that?
Don or Joe? Uh, there'll be, we have our own trucks, so there'll be overnight truck trailers sitting there, you know, as you believe it is. So we've got four trailers, uh, three tractors that travel through the system on a daily basis. So.
Right.
There will be trucks there, trailers there, but it would be in use.
Put a hook to a truck, like they'll park there at night and load it up that night or morning and then leave it again. You're not going to, you're not just going to have a trailer sitting there.
Right.
Nothing hooked to it, just sitting at the dock for a week or two, never moving. Like that's what I'm more or less saying. It's something come in and out. Yeah, your trucks will sit there at night until the drivers come in the next morning, but that's, that truck's gone for the day. It comes back. Versus just trailers sitting there and nothing's hooked to it for weeks on end or anything.
Yes, no.
So what do you think the max time a trailer might be there? Three days?
At the most and they're in rotation all the time. So.
So I mean, most of the trailers are going to be unloaded by a company that's covering them in anyways, wouldn't they?
Right, it's just hours on the way.
Yeah.
So we're delivering to the sources when we got our own trailers. So those will be there.
Well, I think we need, and that was one of my comments too, because I think we need a, a, or a condition that says you're not going to keep any trailers for more than three days. And it just, it's not that you're going to do that. It just gives code the opportunity to say, okay, we seen that trailer there. It hasn't moved in a week. We go ahead and talk to you. So you got to move it or whatever. I mean, because without some kind of key, code doesn't, you can theoretically, you know, you said it on record. Theoretically, leave it there for as long as you want. So I think we'll do a condition that, uh, there'll be no outside storage and, uh, no trailers will be left more than three days on the, you know, if they're moving out or something like that. Does that make sense?
The only thing with the outside storage, I would say there's no outside storage.
Outside enclosed area?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, right. I mean, the outside enclosed area, I get that, right? I'm saying I don't want to see in the
You don't want to see your back parking lot. Pellets of.
Eighty thousand pellets of mulch or something. I don't feel like, I'm just using it as.
We, we agree. We made that amendment before. Oh, absolutely. You're absolutely right.
And I understand the trucks, your trucks.
Oh, absolutely. They're going to cut me out. They'll be there maybe.
I don't want to see trailers just dropped there and it's no truck. They sit there all three weeks.
Well, yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't see that. I don't know if you need that or not. I guess I don't know.
Anything else?
Uh, no, those were the three that I did. I mean, otherwise, I'm sorry, what the, I mean, I like the way the building's looking and stuff, um, colors, everything now, um. I wasn't at the last meeting when this first came out, uh, I'm pretty close for September, but I'm very happy with no road or driveway and pavement. I'm on Hook Road now. It's all off cat road. I mean, so. I mean, there's a lot of pluses still. Thank you.
Good. Okay, Don? Um, just, just a couple of things. Um, the propane tank, is that being used just for like four footers or something? You guys or what's the time that goes with the propane?
We're gonna, we're going to, I, potentially also use it for our heating system also.
Oh, okay.
So it's, uh, that's why I split three hundred gallons.
Yeah, that's what I did. I just wanted, yeah, wanted to make sure.
It's going to be part of our heating system.
Yep, okay. Um, the, um, um, the lighting, um, just a suggestion really. I mean, they're, they're meeting standards, but if you go with the like four thousand or three thousand K instead of that five thousand, um, it might be less intense for the neighbors. And so maybe the same quote of measures, because it wasn't like, well, you're probably going to look at different pictures for buildings, but I did see that one was available at the lower temperatures, which aren't quite intense of a light for these LEDs.
I don't think that's an issue.
Okay. Same thing with the, I don't know, the, uh, side light didn't show that as an option, but I mean, it's an option. I would just recommend that you go with the the less hot ones.
Yes.
Might not be as intense.
Okay.
So we can say a broad measure pattern.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And it?
Yeah.
Tim?
Uh, I have nothing in addition to what was said.
Okay, so the, there's two additional conditions. One is that the lighting will be full cutoff lighting.
The wall backs.
Pardon?
The wall back.
Wall backs. The wall backs. And, uh, that the, there'll be no outside storage outside of the enclosed area.
Yeah.
And then I guess the other third one is that no trailers will be left at the docks or on site for more than three days.
And I guess just, what do you want to do with number eight on the trees?
I think we need it there just in case there's one that we didn't know. What, Don?
The dead trees along there that I was referring to, have that removed. Uh, Frank put the trees along there, but Frank was, Frank was carrying a five gallon bucket of water. Went and put the trees in to make sure they lived.
Yeah, those are the ones up towards the Hook Road.
Yeah.
Stains the whole much like.
First, Primo, Primo was the water.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess.
I hope it was.
Like I said, we've been there just, I mean, as of right now, we all know.
We all know.
Okay, but I guess. I just, I don't see where they, that's going to be a problem for them.
I don't, I don't agree. I agree.
That's the only thing I was.
Okay, anyone have any other changes like to make? Advocate's okay with the conditions with those minor changes? Okay, any other comments? If I have a motion to approve the resolution with conditions?
Seeker first.
He's going to run off the seeker?
Got to love Jerry.
Motion to waive reading and seeker and approve it as provided. Move by, or second by Don. Okay, clerk take a roll call vote on seeker. Hi.
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney?
Hi.
Delby?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we got a seeker on the way. Now we can do the resolution with conditions. Motion.
Was there sixteen on that?
There. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Yep. Somebody like to move it? Move by Adrian, second by.
Yeah.
Tim, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote please.
Delucia?
Hi.
Delby?
Hi.
Aaron Sweeney?
Hi.
Adrian Douglas?
Hi. By the way, I did have a seeker resolution sitting over here. I had it. Okay. I know I should. Okay, thanks guys. Thank you for somebody keeping track of me here. Okay, next item off. Thank you.
How do you know you hold it? Thank you.
If you want to hang out.
Thank you. Stay up for the entertainment value.
I've had enough. I've had enough. You need some help with your mind day over there? I, I think so.
Until the next project, we need to.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, auto wash. Okay, auto wash is online.
Bob, are you with us?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right.
Okay, just tell us any changes or since the last time we talked?
Not that I know of, just looking at the agenda, it sounds like tonight we're just amending the final site plan with the location of the sign, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's exactly what we're doing. Those are the locations of the sign. And we'll just go to Ron, tell us.
Inadvertently, the location of the sign was not shown on the final site.
Okay.
And they are amending it now by showing the location of the sign.
Right.
The only condition that we talked about that maybe you want to deal with is the MSOD standards for landscaping around the base of that sign. The overlay district. Do you have a regulation that for every square foot of signage, there'd be a square foot of landscaping around the base of that sign?
Is that in MSOD as well?
Yeah, that's where it is.
MSOD, not MTOD?
That's right.
MSOD.
And so in this instance, there's plenty of landscaping out there, but we just want to make sure that there's sixty one square feet of landscaping for that sign to match the sixty one square feet of the sign that was approved by the zoning board.
Right, and the zoning board of appeals has approved.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Andy?
As Ron said, this has been approved by the ZDA due to it being a digital sign, same conditions that have been applied to all of our other digital signs that the ZDA has approved in the town, applied to this one as well. Again, tonight, you guys are looking at placement of where this is, and Ron's correct, the landscaping should be also added as a standard.
Okay. Highway?
Chief?
Or, is this going where the other sign is, or no? Where the pre-existing car wash sign is, it'll be good. Where the original was there for thirty years. This is going to go right there, basically. It made it sound like it was moving or something, I just, I didn't think so, I just wanted to ask.
Aaron?
No.
Adrian?
The only thing I had is the conditions of the ZDA, I didn't see those and wasn't sure what they were. It's the same as like the empty mall. Yes, the only thing that they did different this time was they are allowing time or time and temperature to be displayed twenty-four hours. Okay. All these signs are displayed, they don't actually turn off, they just black them out at night, and it's actually better to have something. So the sign company recommended to the ZDA that they at least display just that, the time and temperature, and then during the day, you can display an ad or whatever, but it can't change. It has to be that same for twenty-four hours.
Just like the fancy mall or the church.
So it, on its off-hours, but whenever the car wash closes, it will default back to just time and temperature.
Okay, but then when they're open, it's one message per.
One message, yeah, okay.
Okay, Tim?
I'm good.
So we want to add a condition that there'll be landscaping around the signs to meet the MSOD requirements, which in this case is sixty one square feet, correct?
That's good. That's what it said on the air.
Okay. Bobby, have any problem then?
No, I think, I'm not looking at the site plan right now, but I would think that the landscaping now exceeds that anyway.
Okay. All right, we figure we just want to make sure it's in the resolution. Okay, do you have any problem with the rest of the conditions?
Nope, they sound fine.
Okay. So is I have a motion to approve this resolution with conditions? Moved by Doug, seconded by Adrian. Aaron? Any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both.
Indalucia?
Hi.
Doug.
Hi.
Aaron Swinney.
Hi.
Adrian Douglas.
Hi.
Hi. All right, Bobby, you got it.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you, have a good one.
Can't wait till it opens.
Okay, next item off other board actions, I've got halfway corners, LOC partial release. I saw the paperwork, everything, he signed seal for delivery on this one?
That's correct.
Have a motion to approve this, or this partial release?
Okay, back to you.
Tim? Seconded by Adrian, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, both please.
Indalucia?
Hi.
Doug.
Hi.
Aaron Swinney.
Hi.
Adrian Douglas.
Hi.
Okay, Ron, you're up. Open discussion.
Yep, believe it or not, I've only got one story to tell.
I don't believe you, but go ahead.
Aaron will appreciate it. I don't know if it was you were on the zoning board or not at the time, but we had a request for an area variance over at the corner of Hoover Trail and State Drive. New home, people wanted to put a fence up. Turns out, being a corner lot, they had two front setbacks. The zoning board of appeals ended up denying the application. That night, when she walked out of here, she was not the happiest camper in the world. Well, I saw her tonight over at a local restaurant, and she says, let me see, you work for the town, you're the code officer, right? And I said, no, I'm the good guy. So she's.
I'm sure you've had that too.
Yeah, I did, yes. She went on to say that she couldn't be more satisfied with the redesign of that house, or that backyard, and their pool moving it and everything else that the zoning board of appeals really had a hard time coming to grips with denying. And I thought, that is something that, at least Aaron was on the board. I don't know whether you were there on the ZDA at that time or not. Yeah, but here's a classic example of how upset somebody of getting with you, and then they'll step back and they'll look at the alternatives and be happy with it.
Well, that's a good, that's a good story, Ron.
And that's, that's a true story.
That's good, that's good.
That's pretty wild to hear, I've never thought.
Yeah, so did I.
Her name was Amy, remember the dark hair?
Okay, you sure that's the only one thing?
No, the other part of that story, he was a nice guy.
Oh, here's a thing. Okay, the other, the not-nice guy.
I'll continue with its story for a minute, though, because I was concerned, so I didn't have any ice deck pool out when they called, the set was all done. And I went out there to do the inspection of the pool and the facts. And it is gorgeous. Their backyard is quite unbelievable, and they couldn't be happier, actually. So it was a very good inspection.
So maybe you aren't totally thing.
Well, I wouldn't go that far. They had flame on some lights, so.
There you go. I was giving you fifty percent, so.
So things still are busy, a lot of people, a lot of projects coming through, trying to get stuff done. On the chairman's request, we did try to keep your next board meeting a little wider. But you do have some major stuff on the November third.
Third, I think, it's the third, yeah, I don't give thanks.
So Doug, thankfully for you, and it won't hopefully be too difficult, but at this point, I'm used to it.
It's true, Andy Ross.
No, I shouldn't say that. There you go. So, but no, in all reality, I mean, we do have some projects on for your next meeting, but I think you're more involved, complicated ones that are going to start coming in November, so.
Highway, yeah?
Well, gentlemen, I don't have any feel-good stories. So I'll just say that Highway and Parks are closing up some of our projects, and some of our odds are at the conference point.
You give it away to that white stuff?
Supposed to be, they're looking at maybe the warmest October on record now, it's going to be a good month. Anybody on the board here? So everybody knows, I am leaving on the sixteenth. I'll be back on the second of November, so you'll have the meeting. And I might fall in, but it happens to be the night of my forty-eighth wedding anniversary, so chances are probably slim that I will fall in.
If you call in, I'm not admitting you. I'd as well just enjoy your anniversary.
There you go. Yeah, so that's pretty much it for me, and, you know, I did the comments specifically to bring out what happened tonight. Get this on discussion before we get to the third of November, and all of a sudden, they go, where did all this come from? So I took the streetscape and the MTOD and drove the place and put up, because, you know, I think all, firstly, the first email was really about stuff. The roadway, the curving, I still think the curving needs to go on that east side of that access road. Of course, I'm not convinced that the access road is going to meet the standard.
But, and that said, with the curving there and the water drainage with a specific spot with the possibility of some sort of a rain darting out front would also take care of Ron's comment for water sheeting that way with the full build-up. They would not have to revisit that when they went to the next phase of build-up.
Right, right. I mean, they just got to make some cutouts in there. But I gotta tell you, like I said, when I saw tonight, I saw a guy pull onto the grass with a big truck and he was backing into the block, when you don't put curving there, they're going to thrive on the grass.
With the climbable curving is a good aspect, because, and I continue to cite flare trucks and stuff that nature, but any larger delivery truck that have to make the turn, that's going around the back, as the trailers make the turn, that's what the climbable curving is for, so that they don't start cutting out higher like that.
Oh, I agree with that, yeah. So, but, you know, that back's going to be.
So Ron's going to, if that build-out goes again farther along, and then we can goes in front of that plaza, it's going to be.
Oh, we're not going to do, we're not going to do, so run in in front of that plaza.
I know, I'm just saying, that's a good point, too.
We got to run in front of that plaza. We can't do it.
Well, that other small rocks.
I lost my wife's car once in front of that plaza, because of that.
Yeah.
Somebody flying down, so when she was backing out.
It's hard to back out.
Backing out of the spot.
Yeah, I tried to back in and back in, but even then, it didn't answer. All right, anybody have anything else?
So what you do with your three poles, that's still there, are they?
No, they're not.
I didn't see them. They're gone.
They've been gone for a couple of days.
Just remind them they're going to, they're going to level it off, seat it, and then you're going to start mowing it.
We got a lot of clean up to do.
Yes, they do.
And then they got a mound and a munk that I hope they don't intend on leaving there for the duration either.
I saw that, I saw that. I saw them stacking up lumber those days.
On the initial clearing of that, we stipulated that the munk pile not be left there for a long duration.
I thought we wanted to keep some of those trees in there. I did. I don't remember.
As I recall it, Ed, we left trees for the initial clearing until they determined where building the stuff of that nature, we'd go with the understanding that we were.
But there were some, or there is, that were on the Mercedes.
Deeper, there was deeper, Ed.
Yeah.
Or the other, I remember it was.
Yeah, outside of the drive area and the drive back to the pond, the rest of that stayed pretty much like before. There's only the front where we placed some out so people could see it.
And I don't think that munk pile is going to stay there long, I think that's part of where the road is, so.
I was going to say, isn't that a little bit scary?
I think you're right.
So I was sort of happy when I saw where the pile was, because I'm like, well, let's go, because that's the next part of what they're doing, so.
They get rid of, they get rid of the tailing then?
Okay, so, Don, do you want to talk about that?
Millings? The milling.
Then American, or American?
I pulled the millings out of there for.
You know, Chief?
Yeah, take care of two half-days. I got one parking area out back where I want to put some soil, put in there. However, at that point, Eric has shut me off on removing it. He's supposed to get back to me, some of his people are supposed to be calculating how much they need. I don't know if they have another area, and the fact that they want to grade down or what the scenario is, at this junction, I am shut off. However, there was two, about eight hours of pulling it out of the zone. As said, they are, they are moving some of it, but I guess the site would remain now as to how long they're going to sit on what's there before we determine, okay, now you're not working toward getting rid of it again.
As I told you last time, we're trying to make progress, and this was progress. I mean, they did reach out to Highway and said, hey, you guys want some? So we're happy with that, but as Don said, we hold about third of the pile.
Keep that out, Bobby.
Well, it's promising. The third tier's still there, I know, but.
Motion to adjourn by Adrian, seconded by Tim, all favor? All right, guys.